Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha Regular Board Meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Sue, would you please take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Kelly Piasik. Here. Thank you, Sue. And can you please verify that the meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We do not have bright lights tonight. I know it's a big week for all of our students. Moving on to our recognition for tonight, we have Andrew Yup and members of the South Division One Spring Esports Team who have earned a state championship this year.
All right, Simon's over there.
Apparently, we missed the meetings across the hall. We're all in the wrong room. Welcome.
Thank you very much. You probably stand over here so they can all see you. Go all the way down. So, yeah, so this is the East, this is part of the esports team. Esports, if you guys aren't aware of, is kind of, I guess you would describe it as competitive video games. The sport that our team won Division One in is Rocket League. They would probably describe it as car soccer, would be most familiar. The more I think about it, I think it's like a really over-the-top pong. So, you know, depending on how old you are, you might get familiar with it. They came forth, they built the team. Our captain's David Johnson, he came to me asking to build a team, seeing that Waukesha West had done something too as well, and was hoping that maybe we could expand upon that, and found out a place where we could compete. And it's been great. In the first competition, you could see it had everything that sports, you would expect from sports. Teamwork, there's a leadership opportunity, there's even a streaming opportunity. CJ here has done all our IT work. We don't have our announcers here today, but our other three players are Dante at the end here, Penn, and Lucas. But it has been a great thing, and I hope to expand this team in the years to come.
Congratulations to you all. Dr. Seabert?
Well, it's just super exciting. And Dr. Piasik and I have talked about trying to bring in exciting things that are happening around the district when it comes to really elevating performance and winning state championships like you have. So, in the inaugural season, to be able to do this, I think, is so impressive. And what I think is neat, too, is, you know, it happens on fields and courts, it can happen on stages and in auditoriums, but it can also happen with controllers and being dedicated to something that's really of interest to you gentlemen and the other teammates that you have. So, I just want to congratulate you, coach you up, on leading this group, and congratulate you, boys, on winning a state championship. I mean, nobody can take that away from you, and it's really, really quite special.
Thank you very much.
Oh, it's our pleasure.
Are there any, Mr. Montiel?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo Dr. Seabert's comments. To build something from the ground up and to be that successful is a tremendous accomplishment, both you, Coach, and the players. It's something that will, you'll carry with the rest of your lives. You should be exceptionally proud, I know we are of you. So, thank you for representing the district so well, and yourselves and your families. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Como.
So, what do you guys think were the most important things that you did to come together to win the state championship?
Did everyone want to volunteer?
I guess I'll go.
Go, Penn.
Okay. I'm Penn Gilchrist. I am a pretty supporting role on this team. David and me have been playing for like three-ish years, and then we had Dante like two years ago. Lucas has always been there, too. The big things of playing have definitely been that communication factor and being able to critique, like, the gameplay. So, it's a big thing.
Is that hard to accept, criticism from others?
I think some people accept it better than others, but we definitely are getting used to it.
That is, that is a life skill.
Yeah.
Because we all offer our critiques, and we all get critiques. So, it's actually something really good to, to become good at, because definitely when you're in the workforce, that will definitely happen. And so, it's, it's actually a very good skill. Are there any other things that anyone else would like to talk on? Yeah, that's okay. That's all right. We won't give away all your strategies, right, to the other teams listening out there.
Yes.
Ms. Reinichak.
Thank you. I am just curious how some conversations went, maybe some "I told you so's" to your parents with all the time they say, "Get out of the video games, go do something productive." And, yeah, a parent, too. Also, how many teams competed with you? How did that, how did that look?
Oh, um, in regards to the team, there are four divisions. We compete in what's called the WIHSEA. It's a local scholastic esports organization. I think in our tournament, we had, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, sixteen?
Sixteen in Division One.
Yeah, sixteen in just Division One. And so, we competed with schools all across the state and locals. I would say probably Racine Case in Oak Creek were probably one of our toughest, or two of our toughest competitors within that one. They did go undefeated, and I would say flawless, meaning they took no loss during the regular season at all. So, they went, they went, they paid best three out of five, or best out of five, so they won every match during the season in three rounds. And then, in the, in the state tournament, they didn't take a single loss until that very final match. And it went with Oak Creek back and forth, win and a loss, win and a loss. Some of the players were so into it that they thought there was still a game eight, and we had to remind them that they hadn't won.
So, when it is the state championship, where are you?
Um, the state championship, good question. The state championship is, for the WIHSEA, they actually make it a, what we call a LAN party, so they meet in person. So, speaking of, like, the opportunities within this organization is, many of the students finally get to meet the people that compete. So, usually in the regular season, we compete online. Tier One is our venue in which we go to compete at. And at the state tournament, then, we finally get to meet a lot of the other fellow players. And there is a very solid Rocket League community that likes to critique, give feedback, support each other in improving and reflecting on their gameplay and who they are as a player.
And then, last question. Were any of you playing with each other before this? Because I know with the headset, you can be playing, you already?
Yeah, we were, we were all playing together before this, too, so.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Well, congratulations again to all of you, and thank you for being here tonight for your last day of school.
Thank you very much.
And speaking of the last day of school, we do not have a student report tonight, but we want to thank all of our student representatives for joining us this school year, and we wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors. So, we're now at the point of the meeting where we have an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Education. We have thirteen speakers tonight. So, with that, each individual will be limited to three minutes. We will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes to begin to wrap up comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience, the school board, and this board tonight does not endorse any comments made by members of the community. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our students are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you would do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used in the area behind the speaker, and podium should be kept clear. Also, in order to respect our speakers and other meeting participants, please silence your cell phones at this time. Our first speaker tonight will be David Simmons.
I'm a Christian minister of the gospel, an Episcopal priest, serving a church in downtown Waukesha, and a taxpayer in the school district. Most importantly, I am the father of an openly LGBTQIA daughter who has been at the receiving end of public, school-documented anti-LGBTQIA intimidation at Waukesha West during this past school year. The incredibly misguided and inconsistent implementation of the signage policy over this school year has created and politicized a conflict that simply did not exist throughout the school district previously. The district has made it clear through its actions that it considers the pride flag, or rainbows, or sometimes anything multicolored, to be a symbol of the political left, despite the fact that members of the LGBTQIA community in the Republican and Libertarian Parties also use these symbols. Instead of focusing on the real factors that inhibit learning, this district has spent countless hours and thousands of dollars creating and fighting a manufactured ideological battle against members of its own student body and staff. This has taken a toll on some of the most vulnerable students in this district. My daughter's freshman year has been one framed by this conflict, a conflict I previously would have considered very unlikely to happen here. Likewise, it has taken a real toll on staff. You're seeing that impact in the number of resignations this year. You all need to understand, this is not an issue that's going to go away. You can't just wait it out. These are our children. This is my daughter. The district has chosen to make her school environment a hostile one for both students and staff, targeting specific speech with no apparent reasonable justification. Jesus once said, "Let the children come to me." It is tragic that the school district of Waukesha, by its actions, puts an addendum on that to read, "But only the ones that conform to my particular ideology." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Eggers, followed by Monica Whaley. I'd ask members of the audience to hold their applause, please.
Later tonight, you will discuss the dramatic uptick in resignations compared to last year. It is my understanding that before that, you will hear from some teachers who will talk about why they felt they had to resign. Please listen to them. I have a feeling they will cite the fallout of the numerous bad decisions this board has made or supported over the last year, making masks optional too early, forbidding inclusive signage, terminating diversity efforts, closing a school despite having the funds to keep it open and not advocating for more funding from the state surplus, underpaying our teachers, and so on. It's as though this supposedly nonpartisan board has recently embraced some polarizing political ideology that is in service of a national agenda. An ideology that puts personal freedom and convenience before public safety. An ideology that seeks to protect straight, white, fortunate people from having uncomfortable conversations. An ideology that stresses their better uses for taxpayer money than properly educating our children. Indeed, an ideology that has openly advocated for the outright dismantling of the public school system. This cancerous ideology is starting to kill what makes this district special. As the kids are underserved and the teachers are under-supported, we're losing quality staff to more in-tune employers. With this exodus will come a decline in education quality, which will make the district less attractive, make its neighborhoods less attractive, and affect our property values. Everyone has a stake in the decisions this board and administration make, and it's high time we start to seriously consider multiple viewpoints and stay open to multiple worldviews. Listen to our teachers, especially the ones we still have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Monica Whaley, followed by Amy Menzel.
I am leaving my teaching job because I can no longer work in a district that allows hypocritical, damaging decisions and policies to prevail. Our Board of Education and superintendent are not working in the best interest of our students, teachers, and families. Most of you know about Sarah Whaley, the special education kindergarten teacher with a pride flag in her classroom. I want to tell you the rest of her story. Sarah was never ordered by administration to take her flag down. They wanted her to voluntarily take it down so she could not file a grievance. Sarah believed that her flag was protected by the district's non-discrimination policy. Dr. Seabert's directive in August to remove all political materials never specified LGBTQ signage or flags, never. That was very purposeful. After Sarah was suspended without pay, she filed an appeal. Her appeal was heard by Darren Clark. She lost. The next phase of her appeal was to have an impartial hearing officer hired by the district to determine whether her punishment was arbitrary. I ask you, was it arbitrary? No other teacher was reprimanded or suspended for having any LGBTQ material in their rooms. To this day, many are still up. In this hearing, the district's lawyer stated that the pride flag was dangerous, and added, "If you're able to put up a pride flag, then anyone can put up a poster that says 'God hates blank,' and it rhymes with flag." A word that is disgusting, homophobic, and a slur. Sarah and her lawyer responded with objections and horror. Dr. Seabert, seated right next to the council, never blinked. That lack of outrage is a reflection of the district's attitude towards LGBTQ individuals. The impartial hearing officer found in favor of the district. Sarah's next step was to ask this sitting board to have a public or private reconsideration meeting. They refused her twice. They would not even hear from her. What are you afraid of? I may be leaving this district, but my courageous and dedicated niece is looking forward to working with her beautiful children and their wonderful families next year.
Thank you. Next up is Amy Menzel, followed by Heidi Gerlach.
It is with mixed emotions I resign from the school district of Waukesha. I'm a community member and a parent of a rising sophomore at Waukesha West. I have a vested interest in the success of this district, not only for these reasons, but because our schools have the awesome responsibility of ensuring all our students are college, career, and community-ready. I've worked with that vision and purpose here for the last six years. As a passionate, enthusiastic, and dedicated educator, now with eighteen years of experience teaching at the secondary and post-secondary levels, I have come to realize that I can no longer do my best work in this district. It's an extremely disappointing and disheartening realization. I used to feel valued and respected as a professional here. I no longer do. Directives that defy research and data have been put into place. Decisions are made with little or no professional educator input. And questions and concerns shared by faculty and staff about the direction of the district are seemingly ignored and sometimes outrightly dismissed. These are just a few of the reasons I feel I can no longer do my best work here, and our students deserve our best work. If I may be so bold, my best work as a teacher is pretty great. Not because I'm perfect, I'm definitely not, and my students can attest to that. It's because I care, I continue to learn, and I listen. Schools are not the same as they once were. That makes sense. The world isn't the same as it once was. As we strive to prepare students for a future we cannot even imagine, we need to evolve and grow so our students can do the same. What's happening here is not how evolution and growth happen. Trust and respect professional educators. You have some of the best here in Waukesha. Unfortunately, I'm no longer one of them.
Thank you. Next up is Heidi Gerlach, followed by Stacy Colafa.
My name is Heidi Gerlach, and I have been proud to serve the community of Waukesha as an educator for the past twenty-two years. I fully intended on retiring from SDW, but sadly, I am resigning. Teaching young children has always been a passion for me and has been extremely rewarding. As we know, teachers teach from the heart. We don't choose this position for money. I was not planning on even speaking tonight, but my colleagues begged me to speak on their behalf as well, as they are not able to resign at this time due to mortgages and rent. But they are disappointed, like I am, in the way that we've been treated, and many of them helped rewrite the following. Over the past few years, despite having a very talented and supportive principal, my job here with SDW has lost its joy due to the following reasons. The workload outside of the classroom has become unmanageable, and the time, amount of prep time is incredibly insufficient for all of the universal and small group instruction we have to prepare for. We have upwards of five reading small groups and four math small groups a day to plan for, at the same time, we need to plan and prepare for universal instruction. The small amount of prep time we are provided is often taken up by meetings. Keep in mind, kindergartners need hands-on materials, so I also need to gather, count, and prep many materials for them, along with writing the lesson plans. This does not include the time that it takes to make photocopies. Don't forget that we also plan and teach writing, science, social studies, et cetera. Point number two, when I began teaching, we had one staff meeting per month. We were happy, the students were happy, and we got everything accomplished. Now, I have two to four meetings per week. It's pretty common. Between coaching meetings, team meetings, building meetings, and district requirements, I can no longer have a healthy work-life balance. This includes hour-long weekly PLC and PD meetings that require us to be in the building an hour early each week. We also have meetings during early release, yep, even though this was meant to be teacher time, and this is due to poor communication coming from administration. When I asked a coach why I was having a meeting during early release time, because we weren't supposed to have those, it was supposed to be time for me to get my work done, the response from that person was, "Oh, we don't have that rule anymore. That was last year. We used to do that, but now we can have meetings during your early release time." So, clearly, there's some miscommunication. And teachers are certainly not going to argue.
Thirty seconds.
Number three, every minute of the kindergarten day is no micromanaged and isn't developmentally appropriate, appropriate for kindergartners. Furthermore, our schedules are now created by administrators, not us, the early childhood professionals. These little ones need breaks, snacks, brain breaks, and rest periods, but there isn't time for those minutes within the required academic minutes. And the district wonders why we have behavior problems and that they're at an all-time high.
Your time is up.
Thank you, Heidi. Next up is Stacy Colafa, followed by Ellie McHenry.
My name is Stacy Colafa. I have been a Spanish teacher at Waukesha West for the past nine years. I submitted my resignation this spring and will be leaving the district as well as the profession. I want to speak to you tonight as to why I'm leaving. I am not leaving because I am moving, nor because my husband got a new job. I am not leaving because of a dispute with any colleague or administrator. I am not leaving because of my students. In fact, it is because of the students that I have stayed here as long as I have. I do not agree with the direction the district has taken regarding diversity and equity, but as a taxpaying member of this Waukesha community, I will still be around to voice my opinions on those initiatives. As a data-driven district, I implore you to not cherry-pick the data you choose to drive them. All of the training we receive as teachers tells us that this is not what is best for the kids. I'm leaving the school district of Waukesha because of the compensation model. I have not received a raise in five years. I have been a leader at the building and district level and presented at regional conferences. I have built BP9 course shells and have been a part of the team that created the Spanish curriculums from Level One through AP Spanish Literature. I have earned fours in my past two evaluation cycles as a result of my leadership and professionalism. However, because I do not have my master's degree, I have been told over and over again, there's nothing that can be done. However, when inflation is factored into this equation, my salary should be nearly $10,000 more than it is right now. This is not a sustainable way to earn a living. Whether people want to admit it or not, there is an exodus from the SDW of highly motivated, passionate, and skilled teachers. It would behoove the board to compensate the employees that have put in blood, sweat, and tears. Resignations and retirements at Waukesha West High School have reached double digits this year, on top of the twelve teachers that we replaced last year. You have the power to keep the teachers who have mastered the trade and to stop the cycle in the best interest of our students.
Thank you. Ellie McHenry, followed by Amy Unti Reynolds.
The following words were written as a reflection from a former SDW employee who resigned early in this year. It's a secondary staff member, just so you know, and it's not me. I've always heard the narrative when people leave this district that they have taken a leadership position, moved closer to home, or made more money in their new role. In some cases, this may be true. However, in many cases, especially this year, there is an untold story that is not often heard or essentially asked to be hidden. I am one of those untold stories. I left the district this year, not because of an increased salary, in fact, I took a significant pay cut, and not for a leadership position. I am closer to home, but that is not the reason I left. My heart shattered into a million pieces the day that I had to let staff and students know that I was leaving. I had worked in the district for eight years, but during that time, I slowly felt my soul and my philosophical values being crushed. I fought and advocated every day for students, families, and staff. I worked to help create an equity team in our building, yes, I said the word equity. And with each step I took that I felt moved us in the right direction, I felt there was a wall being built and a level of pushback that made it feel like I was being asked to exist in the 1950s. I also saw a new level of tension among students. I saw and heard students feel emboldened to target our students in the LGBTQ+ community and our students of color. I watched as they felt their identities were being erased. As I watched safe space signs being removed from classrooms per district directive, I saw anxiety and depression increase along with harassment and bullying by race, gender, identity, ability, et cetera. I could not stay. I could not remain in this toxic place. I tried for so long to keep fighting. My biggest fear was that people would say I gave up, and I'm sure some do feel that way. However, I am now in a place where I can celebrate pride, say Black Lives Matter out loud, and honor diversity every moment of my day. To clarify, these phrases and signs are not to support a political agenda. They acknowledge that all groups are welcome and accepted and deserve dignity, equal access, and a safe educational environment. Accepting others, being kind, and supporting all students is the responsibility of all educators, not an affiliation with a political party. I am happy to say that with each day in my new space, I have slowly found myself again. I have seen the board notes of all the amazing educators I have had the honor to work alongside with, resigning from the district, and it makes me so sad. It didn't have to be this way, it doesn't have to be this way. I worry about the future of our students in this district in the years ahead.
Your time is up.
If the things remain the same.
Thank you. Amy Unti Reynolds, followed by Jen Manvila.
I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Natalie Robinson, a social studies teacher who is resigning from Waukesha West High School. She says, "When I was hired to teach at Waukesha West High School last year, I was extremely excited to start working there. I had heard many good things about it. When I came in before school started to organize my classroom, I was impressed with all of the pride flags and welcoming messages for all of the students, and I could not wait to spread that message across the school. That excitement quickly waned moving into the beginning of the school year, when decisions were made about the free lunch program and the signage policies. During my time in the school district of Waukesha, I was finishing my master's degree in trauma-informed education, and I was learning about the importance of students being able to express their identity and agency, and the district is suppressing." identity and agency, and the district is suppressing their freedom and hurting their mental health. It has been difficult this year seeing how the district's policies are impacting our most marginalized students and how those decisions will impact our students now and in the future. While I was only here for one year, I was glad students felt that they had a safe space in my classroom, and I hope in the future that they will feel that way about all of the classrooms throughout the district."
Thank you. Jen Manvila, or Manvila, followed by Stacy Keen.
Good evening. My name is Jen Manvila. I am a parent and community member in this city. My husband and I moved to Waukesha in 2016. At that time, we did not have children, but planned to send them across the street from our new house to a highly-rated Waukesha Elementary School. Within the past six years, that plan has changed due to the declining culture of Waukesha School District, multiple elementary school closures, and the very apparent neglect of respect towards teachers in this district. My son will begin fourth K in the fall at a private school and will now be attending another district for K-5. We sought out different options for K-4 as the culture of Waukesha School District had us concerned. We are extremely cognizant of raising our children in a manner that reflects kindness, acceptance, and respect. However, if they attend a school in a district that does not reflect those principles, what kind of a message does that send to them? To suppress and ignore the identity of students who are supposed to feel safe, valued, and accepted where they spend the majority of their time nine months of the year is disgusting and absurd. We will have no part of this antiquated ideology. The load teachers have to carry, especially for the past years, is exhausting, frustrating, and immense. When dozens of teaching staff are leaving the district in one year, the school district of Waukesha is clearly not doing enough to lessen that burden for teachers or make the environment one where teachers feel respected as professionals and comfortable with their workload. When teachers aren't able to focus on the heart of the profession, the children, due to excessive tasks, stressful situations, and a deflated morale, the students will ultimately suffer, not to mention ruining relationships with high-quality educators. It is wildly unfortunate that this district is losing what may be some of its most talented teaching staff due to the choices this board and negative culture administration has created. Again, I ask myself, is this the positive, respectful environment I would feel comfortable putting my children into? Absolutely not. We will be moving out of Waukesha next month so that our children can attend a district that aligns with our morals as civilized human beings of an extremely diverse and unique world that we live in. As a parent, I am beyond disappointed in the direction this school district is heading. Instead of adapting to our ever-changing world and valuing and protecting its students and the excellence of teaching staff, the choices being made are taking this district backwards to the point where residents are leaving. Finally, thank you to all of these teaching staff in all of the buildings who are giving children the very best every day despite what they are facing. You are the true heroes here.
Thank you. Stacy Keen, followed by Paul Reese.
Good evening. This is hard for me tonight because I know a lot of teachers here, a lot of my kids' teachers here, and I love many of them. But me being an active voice in this district for things that they don't agree with, I have uncovered emails where they have tried to get me fired from my subposition. I have learned that administrators have tried to get me fired from my subposition or not have me sub in their school. Now, I was not planning on talking about that tonight, but if you want to talk about acceptance in our school district and then try to get me fired for thinking differently, that's not being inclusive. So if activism is what is most important to these teachers and not getting our kids proficient, I haven't heard one person talk about kids not being able to read or do math. That's not why they're leaving. They're leaving because they can't put a sign in their classroom. While there are lots of districts requiring that, there are lots of teachers leaving from every district, not just Waukesha. So don't let them try to convince you that that is why all these teachers are leaving. I talked to enough of them that it's not why all of them are leaving, not even most of them. It's the behavior, which I've talked to administration about. It's the workload, but mostly the behavior. I talked to teachers that cry in the hallways at the end of the day because of behavior. They can't teach what they want to teach. So this is gone because there are too many people here that I respect and I work alongside, and I don't want a chance finding emails like I've already found. So, thank you and good night.
Thank you. Paul Reese, followed by Kathy Keller.
Good evening. To quote Mr. Rogers, "It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood, and this isn't getting old." I love this board, I love what it's done. I want to address something. You know, in the Bible, the first one that ever quotes God is the serpent. He's the first one that twists his word. Christ said, "You all know false prophets, false teachers, by the fruit of their spirit; for a good tree does not give forth rotten fruit, and a rotten tree does not give forth good fruit." I also want to talk about, a little bit about authority. You know, we have a superintendent that has authority here, and he's in charge of enforcing the dress codes and that things are followed, and that's his job and his responsibility. We also talk about conversations. Someone wanted to talk about conversations. It's hard to have a conversation with someone who wants to yell at you, "You're homophobic," because you disagree with them about something. And all they want to do is scream his down. What they really want is for you to say that you agree with them and that what their belief is is the right belief. They don't want to have a conversation about it. They don't really care what my opinions are or what my family thinks or what my fundamental beliefs are in God. They couldn't care less about my opinions on these things. They just want to shout me down and say, "No, it's our way, and if you don't do what we want, we're going to throw a tantrum." You know, this notion that some people are resigning because of the way this board is behaving, are they activists first or are they teachers? It sounds like they're activists first. It sounds like if they don't have a chance to indoctrinate our kids, they're gone. They don't really care about teaching the kids. They care more about indoctrinating them and what they present to them in their daily life and how they'll become and what they'll become, not what they're being taught. It's not about academics with these people. They're not talking about academic excellence. They're not talking about how do we get our kids ahead academically so they'll succeed more in life. I'm a machinist. We get guys in there, and they can't read a crap in tape measure. All we want is people who can read a micrometer, you know? I'm not asking them to read a veneer, but you know, calipers would be nice. This is, you know, coming out of school, how to do some basic math.
Thirty seconds.
I also, the resignations, the amount of resignations, we do not, this is not a record of resignations we're seeing. It is not. It may be a slight tick up, but it is not even close to having a record in the resignations. So this notion that we're having all these resignations is a false lie, and I wanted to correct that. And for those who are more interested in indoctrinating our kids than educating them, bye-bye.
Your time.
Next is Kathy Keller, followed by Sarah Harrison.
Hi, I'm Kathy Keller. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to say right away that I support you all as the board in pledging to focus on academics. Shouldn't be a novel idea in my mind, but I am just very grateful that that is your focus, being a taxpayer and a concerned grandparent. I believe that parents should have the right to teach and promote whatever they want in their homes, but when it comes to schooling, if the teachers are leaving because they're unable to sexualize and politicize their students, then I think it's okay that they quit because I don't think it's the right fit. I don't believe that the school district of Waukesha should be turning our children into political pawns. I believe they're way too impressionable for this. I believe that common sense says that as teachers and as citizens, we respect each other because we're human beings, not because of our sexual orientation. So I just want to say thank you again for getting back to basics.
Our last speaker is Sarah Harrison.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Sarah Harrison. I'm a parent of two School District of Waukesha students, and our children are impressionable, and they have to be brave in many situations. Last August, there was a decree from Dr. Seibert to remove so-called political signage, and the implementation of this decree included signs as innocuous as simple safe space signs. My youngest child, at age 14, stood before this board in a room full of adults, such an intimidating environment, and told you something very personal from their heart. They told you that you were hurting them as a queer Waukesha student. They told you that they were seeing increased bullying and that they were asking you to correct this issue. They stood before you multiple times and asked, "What are you going to do?" Now, we stand here seeing nearly twice as many resignations as we had at the same time last year. We are offering a meager 2.5% base salary plus $1,000, which equates to 2.8% for over a quarter of our teachers. The Milwaukee Public Schools are offering over 4%, which is much more in keeping with the Consumer Price Index. With the CPI being over 4%, you are effectively giving our educators a decrease in their income. As we see an alarming number of our great educators resigning, I look forward to hearing from this board, "What are you going to do?" I'm sure that you all serve on this board in order to improve this, our public, school, district, to serve the community, the students, the parents, and the teachers. I'm certain you are not here to drive away our talented educators, to cause our students and teachers to be in an unwelcome environment, to follow national political lightning rod speaking points, and certainly you're not here to encourage parents to send their students to private schools. That would be an application of your elected position. So I look forward to hearing from you, the School District of Waukesha School Board. What are you going to do?
Okay, thank you to all our speakers tonight. Moving on to our first order of business is minutes approval. We have minutes to approve from the May 11 regular board meeting and executive session. Do I have a motion around the minutes? Moved by Ms. Reinacek?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions or discussion about the minutes? Okay, Sue?
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Kerry Kazlowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 9-0. Moving on to our communications, we'll start with the superintendent communications.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. I do have some on the athletic front today. The Classic Eight Conference announcing scholar athletes at each of our high schools. We'll start with Waukesha North. Student athletes in this category have a cumulative GPA of 3.5. They're multiple sport athletes who participated in their senior year, and they have no athletic code violations. So at North, we have Elijah Zerbal, Aaron Still, Sam Kazmeric, Logan Danks, Shane McGee, Mahini, Gamma Madigan, it's a long name, Julia Jansen, Erin Januzewski, Daniel Merton, and Olivia Smith. At South, with those same characteristics, we have Owen Anteline, Anthony Correo, Harsha Gadapati, Olivia Henon, Derek Johnson, William McCoy, Kate Trutwin, Carmela Novak, Brayden Simmons, Simonis, excuse me, and Lauren Sklo. And at West High School, we have Kylie Anderson, Ben Cook, Avina Elangovan, Madison Haisley, Berkeley Krell, Kiara Kundert, Sam Midenbauer, Morgan Roberts, Isabella Rotfeld, and Alex Schneider. So congratulations to all of those Classic Eight Scholar Athletes at our three high schools. And then lastly, I have the great announcement that Waukesha North High School has been named the recipient of the overall Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award. So that's very exciting. And this award is presented based on rankings submitted for each sport by each member school, and the following teams and coaches exhibited exceptional sportsmanship during their seasons. So we have girls golf, coached by Adam McDonald, girls tennis, Heidi Kazwinski, football, Vince Shiano, boys volleyball, Joe Bansky, girls volleyball, Laura Koots, boys cross country, Jamie Mosley, boys swim, Kyle Bedalov, boys tennis, Paul Fitzgerald, and boys golf, Dan Canuth. So this is the sixth time that Waukesha North has been awarded this prestigious award, so we want to congratulate all of those coaches, as well as Athletic Director Brian Schley and Principal Higgins for a job well done. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's really exciting to hear that about sportsmanship. I don't think we could ask for any more from our student athletes, so thank you. Next up is the WEF report, and Mark Barowski will give it.
All right. Yeah, a few things this evening. It's kind of a follow-up to last month's report, but the WEF did deliver all $40,000-plus in grants to the school district's students and teachers on May 26, so that was obviously an exciting day for them. Again, that was a record amount, the north of $40,000. So again, they're very excited about that. The, sorry, those students and the donors will be recognized at the June 15 meeting at Carroll University from 5:00 to 6:30. It's the WEF Partners in Education reception, so they're going to honor those students and any of the business partners and donors. Got a note here that if you meant RSVP but forgot, you can call Lynda Kalmidge to register by phone, and she'll do her best to still accommodate you. Again, that's next Wednesday already. Big fundraiser coming up, August 4th, their golf outing. It's one of their biggest fundraisers of the year. It's at Ironwood Golf Club in Sussex. Registration's still open. They do have 154 golfers right now. They're looking to hit 170, so it's a best ball tournament. So even if you don't golf that well, get out there and have some fun and raise some money for their organization. There are also a handful of sponsorships available, so if you know anyone that might be interested in that, you can contact them. And then lastly, the WEF Recognition Award nomination window is now open. It closes on July 1st, so a little less than a month to get those in. Everything's online under the awards tab, and they're seeking nominees for corporate partner, community partner, and the Sally Jo McCalkill Lifetime Excellence in Education Awards. Like I said, the nomination window closes on July 1st. Winners are going to be announced at the Evening for Education that they have already set up for February 16 of 2023. And I think that's, I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. Moving on then to our consent agenda, we will start with Darren Clark presenting the gifts report.
We have four gifts tonight. Waukesha High School received $600 from David and Heidi Bauer to be used for the South Football Program and $660 from the Multiple Listing Service, Inc. for the weight room. Hadfield received $5,823.91 from the Waukesha County Community Foundation to provide professional development for staff and hands-on experiences for students. Woodyear received $1,237 from St. Luke's Lutheran Church to be used for student support/needs. And the School District of Waukesha Environmental Education Program received $1,000 from the Spring City Garden Club to further build our school and community garden and greenhouses.
Thank you, Darren, and our thanks to all of our donors for their generosity on behalf of the board and the district. Within the consent agenda... of the board and the district. Within the consent agenda, you'll find a number of categories and items for approval later on. If anyone wishes to set aside any of these items for further discussion, you'd have that opportunity. There were no expulsions this month. There are no policies and bylaw revisions included in the consent agenda tonight. If any member wishes at this time to have any items set aside for separate consideration, please indicate that now. All right, seeing none. Mrs. Reinacek, would you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 22 resignations, one retirement, and 23 new and continuing contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Montiel. Did you have a question, Mrs. Kozlowski? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, would you take the vote, please?
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a few items for the board this evening. First, I want to begin by recognizing Genevieve in the back. This is Genevieve's last meeting with us here. We want to thank her for her wonderful service throughout the year to the board and the district, and making sure all of our meetings are broadcast to our constituents and the public. She's going to graduate this weekend from South High School, and we wish you all the best, Genevieve, in college and beyond. You have a very bright future. Second, I don't believe Jessica is here tonight, but she's going to be Genevieve's replacement. She's going to be joining us next year. She's been with us earlier this week doing some training, and Genevieve has been a great mentor for her. So we want to welcome Jessica as well, and we'll get to know her over the summer and into next year. So that'll be great. And third, as all of you know, tomorrow is the last day of school somehow. So it's absolutely amazing that this year is wrapping up. And I just want to take a moment to really thank our students for their engagement and their energy throughout the year. I want to thank our teachers, our secretaries, our custodians, and support staff for their dedication, their passion, and their hard work. And I want to thank our administrators for their leadership and their commitment to all of those people that they serve. Education, certainly I say it a lot, is the most noble profession in my mind, and I'm grateful to everyone, including our families and community members, for their support of the School District of Waukesha. And I wish everyone, including all of you as board members, I thank you for your commitment to the district as well. A very wonderful and relaxing summer. So thank you, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you, and same to you, Dr. Seibert, and your leadership team as well. All right. Next up on the agenda, we move on to our committee reports. The order in which our committees are presenting has changed each month, so the same committee is not going first or last each time. So this month, first up is our HR and Compensation Committee, and that will be given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you. We had one action item this evening, and this would be the approval of recommended candidate and the contract for the position of Athletic Director and Assistant Principal of North High School. The administration is recommending Carl Anderson for the position of Athletic Director and Assistant Principal of North High School. Carl Anderson brings a calm and open demeanor to North. He prioritizes building relationships with all stakeholders. He values getting the student body and community involved in sports, clubs, and activities. In addition to his athletics and activities experience, Carl has a strong background in teaching English and was a teacher leader in a previous role. So Carl will also be an effective instructional coach to the North staff. In his free time, Carl enjoys reading, coaching, athletics, traveling, and spending time with his wife and young son. Carl is currently an Athletic Director and Dean of Students at North Fond du Lac. He served as the Dean of Students at Germantown High School and has prior experience teaching English at Greenfield, Oconomowoc, and Arrowhead High Schools. He received his master's degree in educational policy and leadership and his bachelor of science in writing intensive English and secondary English from Marquette University. Carl's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Carl Anderson for the position of Athletic Director and Assistant Principal of North High School.
Thank you, Ms. Reinacek. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
By Mr. Como. Thank you. Any questions? Or comments? Mr. Barowski? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Kelmore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
Next, with our discussion items, we looked at the comparison of resignation numbers with previous years. Dr. Seibert provided to us, if you have it on your desks, it shows a graph of the retirements and resignations from previous years to this year, and they're pretty much all the same. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee reviewed a month-to-month resignation and retirement history for the School District of Waukesha teaching staff. Please contact Sharon Thede with any questions. Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reinacek. We do have this available as a discussion item, so if there are any questions or comments about that. Mr. Moore?
I do have a question. I would like to see, I know I came to the office a couple days ago to talk to Mrs. Thede, but she wasn't available. So I did send her an email to sit down with her, because I wanted to just know more on why teachers are resigning. And the one teacher who spoke today, not being paid in five years, not given a raise, that does need to be addressed, if that was the case, on why this teacher was not paid, you know, was not given a raise within the last five years. So I just want to know more about that, and I'm just coming respectfully to just inquire about that. So hopefully, we can talk to the HR department.
I think Dr. Seibert is here on behalf of Mrs. Thede tonight, so could maybe respond to that.
Well, and what we can do, Mr. Moore, is we can ensure that you have an opportunity to sit down with Mrs. Thede. As you can see on the chart, we are trending very similarly as we have other years. And in each of those situations, there are individual circumstances that I think probably can be clarified when it comes to the salary schedule and different aspects that Mrs. Thede is best equipped to help you with, and she'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. I don't know if this graph was put up on the screens or if it can, but I would just go through it, I guess, quickly. As far as resignations, 2018, we had 65; 2019, we had 65; 2020, we had 57; 2021, we had 57; 2022, we have 63. As far as retirements, 2018, we had 27; 2019, we had 26; 2020, we had 35; 2021, we had 30; and 2022, we have 20. So starting with the data, that's not the picture that I, it's the impression I get that people have. These numbers.
Can you go to the total, too?
I'm sorry. And the total, I'll go through that as well. I'm sorry. 2018, the total for resignations and retirements was 92. 2019, total 91. 2020, the total was 92. 2021, the total was 87. And 2022, the total's 83. Numbers don't tell everything, but they're the beginning, and they should be the end of the story. I'm not seeing a mass exodus. The reasons for these individuals leaving or retiring, you know, we dig deeper into that, but I'm just not seeing that the data supports what a lot of people are suggesting. So those are the numbers. Those aren't twisted or turned. Those are the numbers. So that's what I wanted to point out. And I know, I think each board member has this, and it's, you know, it's available for public consumption.
I would agree with what you're saying. The only, I guess, small caveat is, I think the 22 numbers aren't totally in yet, right? So that could tick up a little bit.
Correct.
To compare apples to apples, in fairness.
But, yeah.
Yep.
Mrs. Reinacek.
Thank you. And if you turn the page over, if you just look by month to month and compare those, if we look at June, or if we look at May, we can see that, no, we are not finished yet. We do not have the rest of the data, but the overall totals are here in this back chart.
Dr. Seibert, can you tell us a little bit about kind of that April, May, June timeframe, and what typically drives some of those numbers? It does seem to be different year to year. Some months are considerably bigger than others, and I think that's what makes it hard to compare year to year?
I don't know that I can do a great job with that. Perhaps, I don't know if any of my other cabinet colleagues, Mrs. Thede should be here any minute.
Okay.
If we want to revisit that.
Okay.
Later point. I just wouldn't want to say anything misleading.
Certainly. Mrs. Reinacek.
Thank you. And I'll just read a few of these for our constituents. If we're going to compare June for 2018, June, there were 22 resignations and zero retirements. 2019, there were 19 resignations and one retirement. 2020, there were seven resignations and zero retirements. 2021, there were 20 resignations and one retirement. And as of June of 2022, we have 21 resignations and one retirement also. So that's comparing apples to apples.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just can bring up that top graph, just so that, it's a photo on my phone. Forwards, it's not perfect, just so that we can see the overall data that we were rattling off in studies. You look at a chart and just know those numbers. So here's the graph of where we are, and as Mark pointed out, those other earlier years are the complete year of resignation, so it's a good point to make. One thing we don't know in this year is, do we just get the resignations sooner than we've gotten in the past? I mean, it's just hard to tell. But if, just kind of eyeballing the averages of what we get from June 9 on, again, I'm just eyeballing it from previous years. It's usually about 15. So we're, even if that happens and there's 15 more, we're still in the 90s where we have been for the last several years. And that includes having a pandemic run in the middle of all of that as well. So just so everyone can see the hard data.
Mr. Moore?
I also have one more question. I'm so sorry. About the resignation, oh, you know, a little nervous. But about the resignation in regards to, one parent spoke up here about the behaviors. I had a chance to visit schools, many of you know, this past week and last week. So I actually were able to do walkthroughs, and I did see some, you know, some behaviors that were, you know, kind of questionable. And from what some of the staff did tell me was a lot had to do with the behaviors in the schools and the lack of support that they are receiving in terms of disciplinary or holding kids accountable for their actions. And I saw some of that myself, even today at an elementary school, where I had to, you know, witness a student being very disruptive. And I saw it with my own eyes. And not a lot of support was given to that teacher from what I witnessed. And so I just want to know if there's a time where we can meet with administration, or I can meet with administration to go over, you know, what are the policies in place already, and what can we do to make sure that we're holding kids accountable for their actions and supporting the teachers who have some behavior disruptions in the classroom?
Dr. Cook?
That'll be a topic that we discuss on, and I don't want to jump ahead on the agenda, but at the Student Services Committee on June 21 at 6 o'clock. That'll be one of the topics that we bring forward, and it'll be an ongoing topic that we discuss over the course of the year at that committee.
Thank you. And maybe just to reiterate that as well, you know, that the intent of creating that committee to really focus in those areas is that we do understand the environment is relevant in terms of how our students learn, and certainly how our employees experience their roles. So I think that will be an important conversation. I look forward to having that committee.
Just, if I can add just one thing, as you look at these numbers, just to give scale to these numbers, we have about 930 teachers in the district, just so you can look at the percentages, which would put us at about a 90% retention ratio if history is a projection. So that helps frame the conversation.
Well, these are certainly important numbers to watch. I know nationwide, there's reference to the Great Resignation. It's hitting a lot of different industries in a lot of different ways. And of course, we don't want to lose great educators. I think we also can celebrate welcoming a lot of new talented educators to the district. And we'll also continue to watch what some of those application rates look like and fill rates look like. But I can, you know, from the healthcare sector, we're seeing very similar. And I think the month-to-month comparisons are something that we need to probably understand a little bit better, because in any given year, we're seeing these boluses in different months. So that's all I would have to say on it. Mr. Como?
Yeah, and one of the questions that was asked at the HR committee meeting tonight was, how are we filling those vacancies? And we are filling them well. We are keeping up with that. We do see, when positions open up, we see a high number of applicants that are sending their resumes to us and wanting to be interviewing with us. So it has been still very healthy from a hiring perspective and still bringing people to the district, so.
Thank you. Yes, not to put you on the spot, Mrs. Thede, but I know you had another commitment tonight. We were wondering if you had any context for us around the month-to-month variations on resignations and retirements, especially in that April, May, June timeframe? What might lead, you know, that activity to happen during that timeframe, as well as some of the differences year to year?
The main difference this year, I commented on last month as well, is we received resignations earlier than we have in years past. You can see higher April and May numbers if you compare that to the other four years. So it would be anecdotal as to explain why. Part of it could be potentially, we do encourage people, if they know that they're getting other jobs, to let us know as soon as possible, because it allows us, of course, to post and get quality candidates. So we are working with building principals, with their teachers, to make sure that there's that open communication. So part of it could just be that they know earlier and are communicating that earlier. But, and then, like I said, we'll see, we might be trending up if you look at June so far and how we continue. But comparatively to other years, we're still right in the ballpark.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next committee up is the Policy Committee. Mr. Montiel, any updates tonight?
No. Our first policy committee is at 7:00 AM, bright and early, June 27. So no report yet, but we definitely will have one at the next board meeting. So looking forward to it. I'm glad the members and the staff could meet early, so makes it easier for everybody.
Thank you. Next committee report is the Finance and Facilities Committee, presented by Mr. Como.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Tonight, we have one action item, and we have, I believe, five discussion and information items. The first action item is approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement for the replacement of the Lowell Park tennis courts. Brian Schley, North Athletic Director, and Ron Graul from the Parks and Rec Department were in attendance to discuss the Intergovernmental Agreement to replace the eight tennis courts at Lowell Park in the fall of 2023. These courts are utilized by North's tennis teams. Park and Rec is seeking a 50-50 split, with the district's portion not to exceed $279,000. The shared budget number does not include any cost for the new LED lighting system. The city is picking that up in its entirety. They also do all the maintenance, too, throughout the years. And the Parks and Rec Department is covering 100% portion of those two last items that I just said. The committee approved the Intergovernmental Agreement for replacement of the Lowell tennis courts as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Second by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any questions or discussion about that? Mr. Montijo?
Thank you. I would just note that I'm going to abstain from discussion or voting. I sit in the City Walk Show's Plan Commission that this may come in front of. So that's the only reason I'm abstaining.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Browski?
A few, yeah. Okay. So from what I learned the other day at the committee meeting, it seemed like there's a lot of good elements to the decision or to the proposed agreement, not the decision, but the proposed agreement, that our costs are capped at $279,000 regardless of what, you know, if they get bids or RFPs that are higher than that. Also, if they happen to be lower than that, our costs would go down. I understand the district would not pay until the work is completed. So that would mean it would come out of the, is it the 23-24 budget, Darren?
Yeah, the payment would most likely come in the fall of '23.
Okay. So I did have an opportunity to walk the courts. And I mean, I can see that they need work. So I guess that's not really a point of contention. I'm just curious, what other options are there for this to be, I guess, completed and paid for besides what the proposal is, if there are any? I don't know.
I'll take a shot at this, mainly following the administration and North's conversation. Because we talked about what are we going to do during the construction, because it'll go through one of our seasons.
Right.
You know, first of all, people should know, North has no tennis courts on their own campus. West does. South uses Higher. And I would guess that we would use Higher as a secondary North court. And that's just based off of what we're going to do during the construction. So that would be my initial response to that.
Well, I also know that when the Athletic Director, Brian Schley, was talking to us, you know, one of the questions that came up is, why don't we just build them at North on our own property? And we really don't have proper space for that. There is some space, but it's not really a proper space. And Darren, I don't know how closely you guys looked at that, but that, I don't know all the details behind that, but that was one other option that was looked at.
Yeah, the, first of all, with the courts right across the street at Higher Park, we'd be building a lot of redundancy. And I'm sure, I'm not sure that's an advantage to any taxpayer. And Walk Show, they have courts right next to each other. But for the limited land that we have at North, a lot of it lies so low, the ability to build tennis courts and have that be a stable court for a long time in terms of heating and all the things that go along with it, I think that would be a bigger challenge. We thought partnering, and I don't think we would be able to do it cheaper than partnering with the city, because obviously, taking half the price off is a huge advantage, because we would want the same number of courts, because to run a good tennis competition, I'm told you need seven or eight courts to make that happen. So there is some options, but I think in terms of value, this would be the best one, in my opinion.
Okay. I do know that the representative from the city was talking about contingency plans, a couple of them, one using Higher, using West. What if that was the permanent plan? Has that been explored?
We've had some concerns about, and again, I'm speaking more for Brian than myself here, because he has a bigger base of knowledge, certainly, is for some of our students to get to Higher. How would we facilitate that? And one of the things that we're going to do during the season where construction would take place is use our buses to make that work. But there's a fiscal impact to that over the long haul as well. I also think in a district that has three high schools, there's always the, are things, even at the three high schools, we always talk about that fairness or whatever term you want to use. And I think Brian had some concerns that if they are playing that far away, that some kids would choose not to play. And again, you could talk to Brian about that. I don't want to speak totally for him. But that's what I took from his comments at the two FNF meetings that he attended.
Okay. Let's see, what else I got? I'm just kind of, I'm struggling with it a little bit, partly just, you know, for spending the money. And admittedly, I'm one of the newest three board members here, so I've got a lot to learn about the budget and how they work and how we make decisions. But I also know that we want to focus on student achievement as much as possible. And I realize everything that the board decides to do is not going to be focused on student achievement. We've got buildings to upkeep, HBC, things like that. But I do think we need to, I guess, investigate all options and see what else is out there. One of the things that the, I think his name is Ron, the representative from the city, mentioned, yeah. You know, he had said something to the effect that, you know, if the bids come in Higher, you know, they might have to decide, you know, not to do it or make some decision, find the money elsewhere. And it sounded like a, you know, he said something like, this isn't the first time that would happen. So I'm just wondering, I don't know if, maybe since he's here, if he can talk about that, what would happen in that case? Because the scenario I think of is, let's just say, so we're splitting it 50-50. Let's just say all the bids come in 50% higher than what the current bid is. That would essentially mean the cost would go up the same amount that we're proposing to pay, the $279,000. What would happen then?
Yes. So if we were to pass this agreement, we're looking at a maximum of $279,000. If it comes in at the agreement or below, it'll just go through, right?
Sure.
And that's assuming that the city will agree, you know, and have it go through their approval process. Now, if it goes above that, we're still capped at the $279,000. But it really is the city's decision as to whether or not they're going to move forward with the project. Okay? And so let's just say it, let's just say it triples or whatever. And the city says, well, no, we're not going to do it. I'm sure what would happen is we would be in talks with one another. But what we would be voting on tonight would be just for this dollar amount to get the discussion going at the city level. So there's still a lot that still needs to happen there.
Well, I understand that. And this might sound like a stupid question, but what if we didn't pay anything? What would happen? Would they find the money somewhere? What would happen? Would it, I mean?
Again, I'll speak for Ron, but Ron's here himself. One of the things, when Ron brought this to our attention is, if the district or if the city was to just renovate those courts themselves, they don't need eight tennis courts there. Pickleball is their age. Many of those courts would turn into pickleball, or there'd be four courts. And then you're not meeting the needs of North High School. And I think that's what kind of brought us together. And one other thing that, just for the general public to know of nothing else, we've partnered with Park and Rec on several projects over the years, whether it's the parking lot at the service building, which is next to the softball diamonds. We're in conversations for us to do a cost sharing of playground equipment at Lowell because it butts up to the park and there's a lot of city events that go on at that park. So I think it's important to know that this is more than just a single topic relationship. But their comments, and I get the rationale behind it, they don't need the eight courts as a city anymore.
And that's the minimum we need to run a meet?
Yeah, actually, it was seven, but eight really helps out, even though you can get away with seven. That extra court, I guess, is very helpful. I'm not a-
Mr. McCaffrey's the expert?
Yeah, I have a little experience with the tennis. So seven would do a varsity match, but most versities in the Classic Eight have a four doubles. So you wouldn't need eight to be, to have a full varsity match. But you were talking about what if we don't fix the courts?
What if we don't fix it?
I think you were alluding to the fact that maybe we could continue it at Higher.
Well, that was one option. Again, I'm brainstorming options here.
No, and I can explain that to you. Right now, there's two high schools at Higher, Catholic Memorial and South. And what happens sometimes is when you have a meet and a practice, sometimes the teams will utilize other courts, like Prairie. So you'd have to move a bus route. Because say, North had to go to Prairie to practice because South has a meet and Catholic Memorial has practice or whatever. You would have to have, the buses now bring them to Prairie, which may be added cost.
Right, and I get that.
And there's 18 courts at Higher. Right now, probably three of them have to be replaced. They just replaced four because Higher is also built on a swamp, much like the courts at Lowell. So it takes a lot of money to replace those courts as well. So as a long-term fix, it would be expensive to have three teams at Higher, because those courts will have to be fixed, too. So you've got, right now, the agreement at Higher is, the Walk Show Tennis Association pays for half, and the city pays for half, and then Catholic Memorial pays rent. So now you have three teams there, and now you have, the school district would have to fix those, you know, chip in for those courts as well. So it's a web.
Sure.
So, but to have three teams there would be tough. Catholic Memorial is having a similar issue. They're ripping their courts out. And they are going to be playing at McQuanigo, I think. So they're going to be busing their kids over to McQuanigo for a couple of seasons. And this will be more than one season, because one school year is two seasons, because the boys and the girls are at opposite ends. So it won't be one season that this is going to impact when we replace the courts. It's probably going to be three seasons, right? Ron?
Um.
It would be-
Well, certainly in, come on.
Yeah, come on up.
You can make sure your mic's on. Sounds good. Ron Groll, Director of Parks, Recreation, Forestry, City Walk Show. Yeah, from our vantage point, 2023 season would be out. So if we're-
Construction.
Absolutely.
And-
Yeah, the construction period, as we discussed, I think at both meetings, at Finance, we're targeting May 1st. We have such wonderful weather in the spring. And with completion in late fall of that year. So it definitely, you know, we gave Brian a heads up well in advance. It's going to take some effort, plus we're looking to replace the lighting system with LED lighting. You have an opportunity to have a state-of-the-art tennis facility in the bottom line. And you'd be hard pressed to find another opportunity to get a facility of that level at $279,000. That much I can go to the bank with, pretty much. So for your assurance, we tried to work very hard to craft an agreement that would minimize risk to the district. And if you like, I can address the question as far as what happens. You know, if bids come in astronomical, it's no different than any other projects. We reevaluate it. But Darren is correct. From a pure city use perspective, eight courts is not needed at Lowell. Back in 1979, when those courts were originally built, you know, tennis was the pickleball of that era. It was at its high point. But from a community use, and we're fairly tennis-rich with courts throughout the city, it wouldn't be feasible, certainly from a city perspective, to build eight courts if there's not a use, you know, with the school district. So I can entertain any questions you have.
Yeah, and just to go with the pickleball, I want to, Banting is all pickleball, right? No?
Uh, we, well, Banting is, there's one tennis court.
There's one tennis court?
Yeah.
And how many were there at one time?
Three.
Three.
It was odd, odd configuration.
Yeah, it was odd. And then Lowell School had some tennis courts, two of them, right?
Correct.
And those are pickleball, no? And at Buckner, where they just did the courts, they turned two of those tennis courts out of six into pickleball courts. So the courts are actually going down. We are less rich in tennis courts in the city than we used to be. So North, I mean, is losing their options-
Sure.
-to play because we are losing tennis courts, pretty good amount. So, I mean, the options, the team would be spread out potentially in different locations.
Right. Or we'd get a pickleball team.
Or we get a pickleball team, which we might-
We got esports, I mean-
But no, I mean, if you want a tennis team, you got to do Lowell at North. You have to come up with eight courts somewhere.
I think what I'm struggling with is we've got the structural deficits we're dealing with every year. So, you know, where are we going to find the money? Like, what do we ever say no to? I'm not saying we haven't said no to anything, but, and again, I'm new to the board and learning about this stuff, but I think it's hard to, I don't know.
Well, no, I understand. It's always hard to spend $280,000 on something in a lump sum, regardless of what it is. No, I would agree. And I'm just letting you know what the situation is.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to convince you or anything, Mark.
Yeah, no, and I'm just-
The situation is, if you want a tennis team at North, you're going to have to do something.
Right.
Whether that's help the city out, you know, with refinishing these courts or working something out where you're spreading a team out somewhere or, you know, stuff like that. I mean, the girls is usually bigger than the boys at North tennis team. So, but I just don't want you to think it's going to affect one season either, because it's not. It's two seasons in a school year.
Right, right.
So that's, you know, busting as well, for sure.
Darren, can you remind us the cost on the West tennis court update and when that was done?
Yeah, I would say $300,000 roughly. And that was four, five years ago. So that 280-
And there's no lights, right? No lights?
Correct.
There's no lights at Higher?
No lights.
No.
I guess I would say, from a, just from a fiscal management perspective, I mean, we're looking at a GMP contract, guaranteed maximum price. So we're kind of guaranteed what that ceiling is going to be. We do have, we have athletes playing on those courts right now. And if you haven't seen them, or you've probably seen the pictures. And even in the time that it takes to plan this project, you know, we're how many years into, it's decades, right? It's not years that we're talking about, into use of these courts. And that's the other thing for me that I keep in mind is that we have been using these courts rent-free for decades. So I look at that as, that's a partnership that is already benefiting our student athletes. And then there's the cost of doing business in the sense of having three high schools, that we really do need to consider how that's going to work. The other piece for me, when we talked Monday night, the question about could our tennis athletes use West as an intermediate? And the answer was no, because there's no capacity. So we're already full at one of our high schools. We've got another high school that's using city courts that they're sharing with a private high school in the community. And we've got a lot of tennis courts flipping to pickleball. So I think what we're looking, from my perspective, what I'm looking at is a reasonable cost associated with a pretty significant upgrade to a set of tennis courts that we've used freely for decades. So that's why I was-
I know, it sounded to me like, I think, was it the tennis coach that was speaking on Monday? I mean, no, no.
No, it was the Athletic Director.
That's right, okay. I don't know. It sounded like the contingency plans were, I think, maybe a little easier than what I just heard, but maybe I'm wrong. It kind of sounded like they came up with, you know, like-
I don't think they figured it out yet.
Because I think he had said something about the creative transportation ideas and stuff like that. And he said something about the teams maybe not overlapping, you know, most of the girl season, I think it was in August, and some, I don't know. It just sounded like, the general impression I got was, you know, we can possibly find the money elsewhere because you've had to do that for years. And we have contingency plan. That sounded pretty good. That was workable. So I'm just kind of challenging the, you know, and trying to understand the decision a little more, that's all.
Mrs. Kozlowski?
So in reference to the contingency plan, Mr. Browski, we're coming up with a temp-
So in reference to the contingency plan, Mr. Barowski, we're coming up with a temporary solution for a short amount of time to navigate our kids, risking liability, busing costs, in a temporary solution that was, the contingency plan wasn't a long-term. It's trying to assess, where is the construction timeline? How's the cycle? How can we navigate with this? So number one, we're not losing our competitive advantage in being able to not only host events for our schools with them, but also ensure that we're growing programs, and in the current courts, the risk of injury is so significant because of the holes in the courts. So asking our teams to, to encourage sports and do, and take a look at other things on a permanent basis to try to bus, we would end up losing the ability to be able to do that. So on a short-term basis, I think we can get creative. On a long-term cycle, I don't think that's realistic. Looking at where and what we've done from the planning phase and everything else that we've done, and to, to piggyback on Dr. Piasik, you know, we've navigated through all of this with a growing program, with certain things shrinking and moving around, that at some point, maintenance and rework, you have to do it.
Ms. Zenobia.
Thank you. My, my initial feeling on this, when I saw it the first time, I think maybe was a little bit in line with Mr. Barowski, thinking, well, you know, we're coming out of a time when we were all very sensitive to decisions we were making around the deficit. And so spending any big chunk of money seemed, you know, hey, wait a second, we should take a look at this. And so as I, I did that, my conclusion, you know, in the past couple of weeks was this, from a taxpayer perspective, this is, this is a good way to do it. Whether pickleball courts go in through Park and Rec, or the school district of Walker Shaw builds tennis courts, the worst thing for the taxpayers would be if we did those projects separately, in my view. The taxpayers are going to foot the bill. This, to me, looks like a good proposal. And going back to what I had mentioned about being sensitive, it, from what we've heard in the board room over the past couple of months, there's projects that need to happen all over the district at, it sounds like all the schools, to some capacity. These are projects that we have to do to improve the experience of our children at these schools. So the, this has to be done. And I, I think it's a good, a good proposal. I like the partnership. I, I've changed on it from my initial look at it, and I completely understand the sensitivities that we are, are going to have about spending large chunks of money on anything dealing with the deficit. But I just wanted to share that comment, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? This is an action item, so we'd be, and we have a motion with a second, so we'll be looking to take the roll call.
I do have one more question.
Okay, Mr. Barowski.
One of the things you had mentioned the other day was, this goes in your budget cycle for twenty-three to twenty-six, I think?
It's, it's part of our five-year capital improvement plan, correct?
Okay. And so if this was delayed for whatever reason, it doesn't mean we can't look at it till twenty, twenty-six, it just means, what does it mean?
It means we have to work with the courts that we currently have in place, which is not desirable, certainly to the city, and, and I'm hearing not desirable for the district. So the time, time is now to really act on it. We've been on borrowed time for a few years, and it's, as Darren and I talked about, resurfacing, crack filling, you can only do that so many times. There's literally an archaeological strata of all the, all the times it's been topped off, and so we're putting, you know, good money into bad, essentially, and this is our chance, and.
Let me clarify my question. Let's just say it was delayed a year. It doesn't, because it didn't fit by July first into your twenty-three to twenty-six budget cycle, it doesn't mean we couldn't do it in a year.
Yeah, we, well, we would have to seriously look at rethinking that. I mean, as far as, again, our need is, from a city perspective, four courts for tennis at, at that site. And, you know, we, we can't keep the courts or in its current state much longer without putting some significant money into it as a temporary fix. And that's our concern. So a decision, I think, more fundamentally is, is there a commitment, in this case from the school district, do you want tennis courts at Lowell or not? That's really where we're at. And if not, then we'll, you know, we'll proceed with our, you know, Plan B, is we have a need for courts, but we don't have a need for eight. So we'd like to, you know, economize, piggyback, whatever term you want to use. I think it's a great partnership, and as Darren indicated, we have a long history of cooperation, working with the schools, and, and we feel this is a great project to further take that to another level, and we were looking at other projects as well that make sense. And ultimately, believe me, we're on the same page. We're, we're looking to maximize taxpayers' dollar, dollar as much as possible. And these are the kind of projects where, you know, you can achieve that.
Anything else? Okay, Sue, go ahead.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Abstain.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
No.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes seven-one-one. Mr. Como.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Moving on to our discussion and information items, the first one is the District Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Report. The committee reviewed the work that has been completed on our HVAC systems, including duct cleaning and MERV thirteen filter upgrades. Possible next steps were discussed, as well as a timeline for completion. In order to begin design work and prepare for RFP for the fall, formal guidance from, from the board will be needed no later than August. Detailed scope of work and a finance plan will be presented to the committee in July.
Any questions?
All right. Moving on to the District Food Service Program. Aramark staff presented on and answered questions about the district's food service program. Enhanced food options, bigger portion sizes, and food quality were discussed. On tonight's board agenda, a closed session has been agendized to discuss a one-year contract extension with Aramark. After the board, after that, the board will have the option to reconvene into open session to approve the agreement for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. The administration will begin a request for a proposal this fall with a new multi-year agreement that would begin in twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Our monthly budget report, revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education funds. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. That's a good thing at the end of the year.
Good thing. Okay.
The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget development, the committee was updated on the status of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget development. Three tax levy scenarios were provided, highlighting the difference, state, the difference, different state aid, the difference state aid will make in our tax levy, tax rate, and assuming the district continues the same rate of prepayment of the referendum-approved debt.
It continues, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's a little bit more to report on, I appreciate that, Darren. Our, our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two final levy gave us a seven-dollar and fifty cents tax rate. Assuming state aid goes down five percent, we'd be looking at a projected tax rate of seven dollars and fourteen cents. If aid goes up five percent, we'd be looking at a rate of six dollars and seventy cents for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. These favorable tax projections are being made possible by, by an estimated loss of three-point-four million dollars of revenue limit authority. As we continue with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget development process, the administration will provide a recommendation for a tax levy rate scenario to be presented at the budget hearing in September. Final levy and tax rates will be approved by the board in late October. Good thing I completed that report. There's a lot more to it.
I don't see any questions.
All right. Moving on to our ESSER update, the administration shared trial balance of the items that have been approved by the board. This report will be agendized on a monthly basis to keep the FNF Committee and Board of Education updated on the utilization of ESSER funding.
Okay.
And Mrs. President, that concludes my report, and I'm glad I gave the whole report.
I am too. Thank you, Mr. Como. All right, the next committee up to report is the Teaching and Learning Committee, and Mr. Zenobia will give the committee report.
Thank you. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was last night. There are two action items and four discussion items that appear on the agenda for this evening. Our first action item was the approval of the elementary writing resource. Over the last three months, we learned about the elementary writing pilot, including rationale resources, timeline, and team. The pilot team was at the May TNL meeting to share their experiences and qualities of benchmark writing, and why it was selected as the resource to recommend for approval. Melissa Yao, elementary learning director, and Emily Freeman, elementary literacy coordinator, answered any remaining questions for the committee members. On a vote of five to zero, the committee approved the Benchmark Writers Workshop, elementary writing resource as it was presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore. And Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes.
Eight.
Eight-zero.
Our second action item was the approval of the Social Studies High School course and sequence recommendation. The high school social studies team has been evaluating graduation requirements and presented a final recommendation for a three-and-a-half-credit social studies requirement to include one credit of human geography, one credit of world history, one credit, credit of U.S. history, and a half credit of government, and either a half credit of economics or a half credit of personal finance. A motion was made to approve the recommendation, but the motion was not seconded. Therefore, the course sequence will remain as it is currently being implemented. Moving on to our discussion items, there were four. The first was the Whittier Achievement Gap Reduction Grant update. Information about Whittier's AGR grant, which stands for the Achievement Gap Reduction, was presented. One of those requirements of the grant is to present, present twice a year on how the grant is being utilized. Whittier's principal, Brandy Hart, reviewed the AGR strategy for grades K to three for the last school year, which focused on small classroom sizes of eighteen students or less, and an AGR instructional coach at kindergarten and first grade. Achievement data for K to three students was also presented. This AGR grant will transfer to Headfield next year, and will implement instructional coaching support in classrooms with teachers, as well as small group intervention with students.
Mr. Como.
Yeah, Brandy did an excellent job with her presentation, and you could tell the excitement that she brings every time that we meet with her, and I don't care if she's meeting with the board, or group of parents, or, just her energy is just fantastic. And I thought she did a really good job of explaining where they've been, what they've done this year, and it looks like they're on to some things that are starting to really work well. I was truly impressed with how they're looking at each individual student, and how they continually focus on, on the individual. And I think that's really important with achieving these goals here.
Mr. Moore.
I would agree, Mr. Como. I actually had the chance to visit Whittier today, and Brandy Hart, the principal there, is, you know, very positive, very energetic. She, you know, really, really cares for her students, and she even introduced me to the AGR grant specialist today, too, who I got, who I got to meet with as well. She is just very, very invested, and I was very impressed with the amazing work that she's doing with, with the AGR grant. And she even gave me my little office space, and it was like, you know, feel free to sit right here and work on, you know, your board stuff. And she's just very, very positive. I was very impressed that a lot of school walked through this week, but at Whittier, I was, I was very happy with the work that she was doing with the AGR, and, as well as the specialist who I met with, so.
Thank you.
Our second discussion item this evening is on the high school English instructional resources. There was, this, this was the second discussion held, held within the committee. Our language, our English Language Arts from nine to twelve curriculum visioning team is recommending the Study Sync resource for grades nine to twelve. The team will be seeking approval of this resource at the July twelfth meeting. Our third discussion item is the Social Studies Resources for grades six to eleven. Committee members were introduced to the Curricular Resource, TCI, that is being recommended for social studies courses, grades six and eighth, as well as world history and U.S. history. The presentation reviewed the vetting of materials, piloting with students, collecting stakeholder feedback, and included neighboring district comparison and cost analysis. The team will return for a second time in July. Our fourth and final discussion item was on key performance indicators and the three-year targets. The committee revisited the district key performance indicators approved last October in areas of student outcomes. To facilitate a discussion regarding adding more specific and measurable three-year metrics, Jody Landish, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, brought forward a draft for review. Each subcommittee aims to finalize these goals during the summer, so that the full board can give consideration to approve these three-year KPIs during their August meeting. And that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held here in the boardroom, Tuesday, July twelfth, at six.
Thank you, Mr. Zenobia. Mr. McCaffrey, anything for the Student Services?
No, we didn't, we haven't had our meeting yet. The meeting is on June twenty-first, six p.m. in the boardroom.
Okay.
Looking forward to it, our inaugural meeting.
Very excited for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Just a reminder on the calendar, too, as we did last night, when we get to July, we have the three meetings in a row, as we did this month as well. So we'll have the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, but we'll hit a lot of committees, so rest up. Carb load, yes. All right, thank you. That concludes our committee reports for tonight. So moving on to other business, do we have any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Mr. Zenobia.
Yes, thank you. I would, would ask the board to review again, we've had many discussions over the past year regarding our library materials, and I would like to, again, revisit this. I don't feel that we have come to conclusion on some of these issues, some of the age-appropriate materials that are in place. So if we could look at that in the, in the future meetings ahead, I would appreciate it.
Would you recommend bringing that, I'd propose we bring that back to the Teaching and Learning Committee, or would you like to bring that to the full board?
I believe it'd probably be best to bring it back to the TNL committee first, and I believe it'd probably be best to bring it back to the TNL committee first, and then to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make note of that. We do need an executive session tonight. Again, we will need items C, D, and E. Will not need D. Okay, C and E. Is there someone who would be willing to read that motion? Karen.
Thank you. I move, just clarifying, C and E isn't Edward.
E, yes.
I move that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically to consider a complaint filed against a district employee under School Board Policy 9130, and adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, district food service contract, and sale of district properties.
Second.
Mr. Como.
Just a quick comment. The sale of district properties, I will need to make sure I recuse myself during that portion, but I can be in with the other portions.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Dr. Seabird? Okay. Okay. Ms. Reinacek, would you be willing to restate the motion for item E? Sorry.
C.
C, to include, to consider an employee grievance?
Yes.
Thank you. And, yes. Which was Mr. McCaffrey.
Okay. I move that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically to consider a complaint filed against a district employee under School Board Policy 9130, and to consider an employee grievance.
Second.
Is that acceptable? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Sue, we can go ahead with the roll call now.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine, zero. I know this is late in the game, but before we adjourn again, I just want to congratulate all of our graduating seniors. I want to thank all of our teachers and administrators for everything that they've done this year. I personally know how many events are going on at our schools this year, so I specifically want to thank our office staff, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, and all the people who are keeping our building, including our, our school resource officers, who are keeping our buildings open and accessible and clean and safe. And so, it's a team effort, and grateful for all of you and for all that everybody's doing. And with that, the meeting is adjourned, and we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we are back from executive session, and we are going to take a vote on... Help me out here. Thank you. We're going to take a vote on action for approval of the District Food Service Contract. Is there someone that would like to make a motion? We could just return to our motion from...
Option 3 is the one that...
Mr. Como.
I, I move to approve the one-year agency contract with Airmark for the 2022-2023 school year, option number three.
Second.
All right. So, Carrie, we can go ahead and take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek.
Hi.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Okay, passes nine, zero, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.